Consisting of the minutes from the council meeting and work session of July 21. As I read over those minutes, I asked Phyllis to revisit the university smoking policy item in the work session, which she forwarded to you all, a proposed modification of the minutes. I simply wanted to go and make sure it was on the record that I had my concerns and that I would like the university to at least pay attention to the neighborhoods and give a look every now and then and see how it's going. So I asked that those items be put in the minutes. As I said that, that night, I was looking right at Mr. Dukes and he nodded, which of course doesn't show up on Phyllis's tape. So, you know, that might be one of those ones where we could just ask the university to, is that something that they're allowed to take on, the occasional walk through the neighborhoods? So we have a couple of weeks before we get to second reading on this, so we can, we can look into that. Are there any other comments on minutes? Or if not, I would ask for approval of the minutes in the work session as amended?
Approved. So approve the minutes of the council meeting and work session for July 21st.
Seconded.
Moving seconded and in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? With that, we'll turn to reports. And Mayor's report is short and simple. I went to the League of Oregon Cities OMA Conference, Oregon Mayors Association Conference, in Cottage Grove last weekend. It's always a nice chance to get together with mayors and hear about what's going on in other cities. And also, we've given some really nice presentations this year. One that stood out to me was a visit from the Executive Director of Cycle Oregon and the Alex Phillips from Parks and Rec who handles cycle issues there, and also the Chair of the Senior Cycleway Committee. They were basically presenting to us about scenic cycleways and the continued growth of tourism bicycling in state Oregon. Current estimate is about $400 million a year statewide spent by scenic cyclists, touring cyclists. And that's something I would like us to continue to press for our fair share of. And, you know, I'm really tickled with Marshall, your involvement with the tourism group is trying to really put Polk County on the cycling map. I know we have some just wonderful areas and great places to cycle, so hopefully that continues forward. I had a session on evaluating city managers, and it looks like we're doing it right, for the most part. There was one page in their document that they, I think they gave us, was it Newport's evaluation? And Scott, I'll share it with you later. It was just a real nice check-in on a kind of a department-by-department basis. I thought it might be one that we could look at, not for this year, obviously, but going forward. So I'll share that with you later. Having dug that one back out of the stack of stuff I brought home. And that was kind of it. It was a really good gathering. Enjoyed it a lot. I appreciate the council and city allowing me to go to that every year. It's really good to attend. With that, I'll turn to the reports from council reps and ask Councilor Sheller Nagles to tell me about the senior advisory board.
Thanks. Senior Advisory Board met on July 28th. We do have one opening left on the board, so I might mention that, so if there's folks that are interested, get ahold of Phyllis. The good news is Meyer Memorial Trust came through with 40K, so 40,000, so we're within 35,000 of what we need to start the building. And we still have one, Fort Family Foundation is out, and we had a $90,000 request there. So hopefully we'll still make that one here shortly. I believe they're scheduled to meet late August sometime, so maybe we'll have good news there shortly. Saturday, Bike MS was in town and the Senior Center van was making the rounds. They were hitting the cherry orchard and a couple of wineries and stuff. I guess this is the fourth year they've done that, so I had not realized that before, so I thought that was kind of neat. Let's see. Those are kind of the main highlights. We had a fairly lengthy meeting. We elected new, so board president, vice president, and secretary. So that all took place at this last meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for August 25th.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilor Melvin?
Sure. The Arts and Culture Commission met on Thursday, July 23rd. And there were a few things that they went over. The Western Union University students that are in the art program, they do a show every year, and we normally purchase a piece from that. So we purchased two pieces this year. And those will be out for display in a couple different places in the near future. The Fourth of July Art Show was a success again this year. The intention is to do additional publicity for next year's art show, so that we can get more participants. And then some new projects and ideas that are coming up. As I mentioned previously, looking at other types of culture, there's going to be a discussion with the American Sign Language Club and seeing if they can get like a deaf community event and possibly work that in with one of our restaurants. And maybe do that like on a monthly basis, so just that they can be part of, more a part of our community. Also, one other thing was some discussion, but it looks like, one of the things that might mix with tourism, as well as the arts and culture, would be doing more with Christmas lights in Main Street Park. There's a lot of places around, a few places around the state that people can go for looking at Christmas lights, but there's nothing real significant here in the Mid Valley. So we thought maybe that would be a thing for Monmouth to become a destination for Christmas lights and hot chocolate and maybe another adult beverage to create a destination and a Christmas atmosphere.
Very good.
So that's in the wind.
Can I come from Lewis and I know, which when I was a kid, they started the Christmas light tradition and is now a park, I would say, five times the size of our downtown park. And it, I'm not kidding you, there's probably 250 trees, and they cover them from base to the top of the tree. It's not just draped, I mean wrapped, every piece of the branch is one color, and then they have drapes, they have big stonewall, and they utilize a ton of volunteers and everything they've gone out and everything, but it's amazing, but I'd support that one. That was cool.
Good. Good. Councilor Carey?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Minnetonka Board did not meet in July, took the month off. However, we do have on August 17th, a retreat, and that will be fairly focused, a little different sort of a meeting. We're going to be focused on, I might have mentioned this in the past, bylaws, that group does not have bylaws, or at least none that can be identified. Sort of a code of conduct, which, not necessarily that it's required with our current group, but it's a good idea to, you know, to sort of define how we communicate with one another. And then, it's sort of a compilation of all of the different policies that have been established by the Minnetonka Board over the years. We get that in one location, because there does not exist. I think Maryland's had to go through minute after, you know, minutes after minutes after minutes, and, you know, the recollection varies somewhat on that. So that, we'll professionalize that a bit. We're also going to be discussing goals for Minnetonka, for the, for our board ourselves. And then there'll be some discussion about possibly revise the business plan for Minnetonka. That's the 17th of August, 7:30 AM, and it'll be at Henry Hill, I believe. And then we do have a regular meeting coming up on August 27th, I think, is our normal August meeting that will come forward, and that meeting is in the City Hall, City Center, sorry. That concludes it. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Marshall, would you like to report on WIMPAC?
Sure. State board? So we have, we've selected a person to hire for the, see, Community Access, Community Television Access Coordinator. And I think we're still in the process of getting the official offer out, but somebody has identified, we're pretty confident they're going to accept the offer. So hope is to have somebody actually doing some coordinating, coming up here pretty quickly. Standard point of contact for both members of the cities and the university and the community as well, to hopefully get some more content up there.
Got a quick question about WIMPAC. How does BEST in Oregon, are they affiliated with WIMPAC?
They are not.
They are not?
They're members of the community, and they're certainly welcome to contribute content, the same as anybody else, but there's no, the partnership that used to exist has been dissolved.
Okay. Any community announcements, council?
Amphitheater project, we have actually, documents are on the street. We're reviewing right now, we've got a pre-construction, mandatory pre-bid meeting this Friday, then actually August 20th, the company's a comeback. And so between contracts and everything, the target still is to get somebody in there, start in October. And then the library, got done with their summer reading program, had a really nice end of the session event. One thing they're trying to do too right now is actually do kind of like a mini version in August, because then some kids will kind of hit a wall and then not do anything in August, and then they go back to school.
Or the adults as well. My wife is really happy to see the actual.
Yeah, good. Yes, we've got that going. Then our Monmouth Engage Project, our visioning project, we had a steering committee last week, had a really good discussion. Our key event coming up is August 11th, that's next Tuesday. I'll be in here, and it'll actually be more of an open house format, where you'll have a booth for each of the key goals that are came around. You can have ideas. We're trying to get people to actually get excited and get involved with the project. One thing we talked about, that when this comes back to the council, which will be in September, is some ideas for keeping this going. So some sort of continuation of a committee, a structure, we'll have some different ideas on that, so we can keep going. And then, actually, that was it.
Yeah, I'd like to, would like to talk some more about that bid on amphitheater at the work session, is that possible?
If we have, yeah, absolutely.
Was your work session in?
No, you just tack on to this meeting.
Yeah, we don't have a work session. We could, we could take a moment after.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about that.
Just hear what everyone else is saying. Okay. Very good. Are there any citizen comments? And seeing that, I'll turn to the business agenda, which begins with an updated memorandum of, let me try again, an updated memorandum of understanding with Friends of the Senior Center. That's better. It looks like the community development director fancy this one.
Members of the council, in 2012, the council approved the current memorandum of understanding between the city and the Friends organization. It was a 30-year commitment. And what you have before you this evening is an updated agreement, and basically is one paragraph of the document that's been updated to reflect some more current budget projections that the existing agreement was adopted in 2012 and carried the city's budget commitment through 2015. And we're now amending that to stipulate at least the city's projected financial commitment to the Senior Center through fiscal year 2018-19. This was reviewed by the Friends Board, and they have recommended that the council sign the agreement, or not the, the Senior Advisory Board. And I believe the Friends Board, they're going to review it on the August 14th. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. The projections that were done in there were projections that I did in conjunction with some of our grant applications to several foundations. And they were, the projections were based on discussions with both Sue Teal and Mark Dunmire about some things that would impact the budget in years to come. For example, Mark did some nice PERS calculations for me to be able to fold that into future projections. So that's, that's the origin of those numbers, and obviously, those numbers are for fantasy projection purposes only, they aren't necessarily the budget.
Okay. Any questions on this, council?
You know, I wonder if, and the good work on Mark's part notwithstanding, is it, is it really necessary that we identified numbers in a document like this, a memorandum of understanding? I mean, the first sentence seems to pretty well get it, that, and I'm fine with the numbers, it's just we have to do this, we have to do this fairly frequently, unless it were just a generic statement of support and commitment. It's more work for you all, and if you prefer it that way, fine, but it sort of strikes me that we build in obsolescence.
Yeah, this was kind of recommended to us by, by our grant writer that we use, and the question about updating it actually came from the foundations themselves asking, it's like your document needs to be updated. So in terms of updating the numbers, it isn't a really hard process for me to do, yeah. I feel, to me, I feel more comfortable if we have that in there, because we're showing this to people who are asking for significant amounts of money from.
Yeah, and if that's, that makes, I hadn't thought of that aspect of, so the degree at which we can demonstrate that financial support in numbers are better.
Right. Thank you.
Just to add, just classic cases, there's so many people that will actually get money to build something, and they have no ability to operate it. And the worst thing that can happen to a foundation is to allocate money for unused whatever.
Scott, I don't know if you're aware, before you came to town, but the citizens of Dallas approved money to build the Aquatic Center, and that turned down operating. Yeah, for example, they turned down operating. They built, they said, yeah, build it, but don't run it. So that's been an interesting case over there.
Thank you. So any other questions, council, on this?
Very good. Very good report.
There is a request for approval of the memorandum of understanding, if someone would like to make that motion?
I move approval of the updated memorandum of understanding among the senior and community center.
Movement seconded. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And keep it moving. Thank you, Mark. We have a request for a bond post issuance compliance policy, and there was a second copy of this document at our place, is there a modification with name in the packet?
No, there was something out of order in the packet, so it's not.
Okay. Thanks. And Mark, what do you got?
So what I wanted to do is give you some information on the policy itself, which is a good thing, and then how we got to the policy, which isn't so good. So the policy, anytime you issue bonds, there's requirements that you have to meet as part of that bond issuance. And there's, in the policy, there's two sections. One of them has to do with the tax exempt status of the bonds, in order to maintain that status. There's criteria that you have to do during the life of the bond, and in particular, while the bond is being spent down. And if you, if you fail to do that, what happens is that tax exempt status gets removed, and the bonds get converted to taxable bonds, and it becomes, the interest rate is much, much less favorable, so the costs are a big cost. So you don't want to have your bonds converted. So that's the first part of the, of the policy, it deals with that, maintaining that tax exempt status. The second part of it has to do with post issuance compliance related to your disclosure that you do when, both when you issue your bonds and every year after, when you, when you update that information that was in your offering statement when you issued your bonds, and then kind of put your bonds out to the world, and say, this is who we are, it's like a 75-plus-page document, has all this information about your city, your financial position, demographic information, there's just lots of information in there. So that, the financial information in your audit gets posted every year to a place out on the, on the internet that the SEC has identified where we post that information, so that issuers and those that are investing can all go to the same place and get information. So we have to do that every year. The part of that compliance is not only what's in your audit, your financial information, but then also some of those things that you had in your, in your offering statement about your city demographics and other information that aren't necessarily part of your financial audit, those, that also has to be provided as well. You almost kind of have to do a refresh on your, on the information that was in your offering statement each year. So that's, that's the second part of the document, is complying with that. So the document, really, it's, it's a bunch of information and control procedures to make sure you do both. So how we got there, that's the, probably the more interesting story, at least it was for me. So this time, recently, we were in the process of initiating bonds to refinance a couple of loans that the city has through Oregon Business Development to achieve better interest rates. So when we went to our underwriter and started that process, the first thing they did is they looked at our, at our past disclosure, what we've been doing over the years, and their requirement is much different this time around when we've gone out for, for a bond issue than previous. And that's because of an initiative that was done by the SEC quite a year ago that required underwriters and issuers to look at how they have portrayed in their offering statements their past continued disclosure, you know, how they've done on those requirements. And so with that heightened focus from the SEC, underwriters are now really going through these things with a fine-tooth comb. And so when they looked at our past compliance, they found some things, and so we looked as well and conferred that we missed some things. And so what we did is identified them, and you can see what I had attached in the, to the staff report is a couple of notices, failure to provide information. So these documents were published on the 28th out to this website where you put this information, it's called Emma. I provided this information that identifies what was missing in prior years, that should have been provided, but wasn't, and then also a notice that it wasn't provided, definitely both. So there's two types of things. One of them had to do with financial and operating data that was missing. And they, and you can kind of see what some of those things are, property tax values, some debt ratios, different things that aren't necessarily part of an audit, you know, what would be your typical financial information, but nonetheless, things that were required by our, our continued disclosure agreements. And then the other thing was, there was a rating change by a couple of the insurance companies that insure our bonds. And unfortunately, there's not a very good mechanism to alert, you know, issuers when that occurs. I talked to our underwriter, and they agreed to, I can periodically contact them and find out if there's been any kind of rating changes, and then I can post notice if there is, but it's not like we get notification that their ratings have changed. But we're required to post that that has happened under our disclosure on our bond issues. So that's something that I'll just have to kind of watchdog in the future. So the second notice provides that information, that there was a couple of rating changes to insurers, and that that happened. So that's, that's the, kind of the fix. And then the, going forward, the policy helps ensure that those things don't happen again. So that's kind of the story behind it. As far as the significance of it, sure may be uncomfortable. But as I learned more about this by talking with our underwriter and law attorneys, and even actually going out onto Emma, because I looked initially for, for some templates or something that could help me generate these, these notices. And I went out there and just did a search out on Emma, and there is like a ton of this out there. And so I know we're not the only ones, still doesn't make me feel very good that I didn't, I wasn't more experienced at the time and understood all of the detail in this, but nonetheless, certainly, you know, kind of ripping the Band-Aid off and just giving this to heal up is the best approach. And so that's what this does, it just, all of the issues that we, this evening have had are corrected with this, and all the notifications have been made. And then the policy helps us, one, be much more educated and two, have some controls in place. There's another one person in the finance department that will, will counterbalance what I do relative to this, which will be good. So I think we'll be in much better shape going forward. But unfortunately, it hurt, and it's just now that this is the correction, so.
If I, if I may, I can say this is new enforcement activity by the SEC, as Mark suggests with the reports, has caught cities and their underwriters by surprise in the past year. So there's, there's quite a shockwave going through the municipal finance industry about this enforcement activity. It's not that the requirements have been new, are that new, but they've never been enforced, and so the underwriters haven't been that diligent about ensuring compliance by issuers. Issuers have been, accepted sort of the practice that the SEC is allowed to, to take place by non-enforcement. All of a sudden, they just turn the screws up, and has really caught cities and counties and municipal issuers all over the country, a lot with this. So it's not just a Monmouth issue, by any means.
Does this, does this have an effect of rebonding? We have to pass this to rebond? Is that what this is all about, really?
Well, so the suggestion was, it certainly helps you, and it makes you look better to the investor if you're taking care of your problem. And so, yeah, this was, this was a suggestion that they had, which we agreed, we thought was a good idea to do.
Any other questions?
We worked with professional people on this, right? And to Lane's point, I suppose, they, they would have been aware of it. I mean, I don't know that you should be the one, the ace expert in that. If we were working with a consultant or sisters on this thing, I would think that they would work and then help us with that backend piece.
They did. They helped us a lot, as, you know, through this issuance, in terms of identifying the errors and the things that were missing. And I dug in there with them and looked at it, and we kind of compared notes and agreed with the findings of, you know, on each end. As far as the past goes, I think it was kind of like what Lane said, yeah, it just was something that wasn't looked at as close, and I just wasn't aware. And so I became very aware through this.
Sure. I think the perspective used to be, there was really some big picture things about your organization, your financial capabilities, your tax base, that's what people look at, that's what investors look at. And actually, that's one thing that our underwriter talked about, he says, investors don't care about any of this stuff that they were posting. They don't care. They're so minor. Chart of a debt ratio, or a little calculation on this, investors don't care. This is the SEC jumping in and getting active. The one that's really concerning too is that there's certain areas that they've passed edicts that are not backed by anything, there's no rules, and they will not tell you what the consequence is on things we've been working with, actually, our bond council, and they said, we cannot guide you on this at all. We have no information that can help you. It's a, it's a real fuzzy gray area right now.
So are we going to see an increase in, in the rates moving forward, or if we've bandaged, or take off the bandage and let this, this is going to, are we, is this going to affect us getting lower rates than we would have gotten, I mean, moving forward?
Potentially. Like I said, if an investor cared, but if an investor's poking around and going, huh, there's this organization that's got a couple holes here and there, that might make them not feel as comfortable.
And so potentially in the past.
So if everything's taken care of now, we're, we're up to snuff.
This wouldn't have affected us of getting a bond in the past, would it? No. It's not that bad.
This is such a recent invention.
Sure.
I mean, I doubt, was this stuff even in place when we sold the place, Bob?
It was, actually. It was. It's actually, these requirements have been out there since, well, the first bond that we have that requires this is back 2005. And so these requirements have been there, it's just that they haven't, they haven't been looked at when we've done other issues, and unfortunately, I just was not aware. We were posting information, just not enough.
You have, you have my permission to stop beating yourself up?
Yes.
Seriously. Seriously.
Okay, so this would be resolution number 1805.
So, I move adoption of a resolution adopting a bond post issuance compliance policy for the city of Monmouth.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Phil Oles.
Councilor Schaper.
Aye.
Councilor Silvernagle.
Aye.
Councilor Milligan.
Aye.
Councilor Carey.
Aye.
Councilor Guthrie.
Aye.
Councilor Johnson.
Aye.
And that means we adopt that resolution.
I've got an added note, just council procedures, that this might be the absolutely most awesome title you have from the Gendarme all year. This is glamorous. It's got zip to it.
A resolution adopting a bond post issuance. Yeah, that sounds, that sounds pretty critical. Alrighty.
But your Mark loves that.
Okay, next item up is the first reading of Western Smoking Regulations Ordinance. Are there any questions for staff on this before I read by title?
I've got some maps just.
The red line.
They're, they're in wolf red, so.
You'll know that the map doesn't include some roads that are internal to the campus. That's just because they're campus property and not city property.
Right. So, this, the red is city streets within campus.
Or on the edge.
Or on the edge. No, that doesn't help. It looks like that. Okay. So, the church street piece runs all the way out, past all the athletic fields, the mural fields, and some of them.
There's a little bit of difference in that. Church Street is the full width of the church street right away through campus down to stadium, and it's only the north half of the church street right away after that, so it's just the side that, that's the campus.
Right, yeah. And again, I would urge, if we could have, if we had a commitment, at least acknowledgement from campus, that might be a good idea to walk the neighborhoods periodically to make sure.
For, for?
Just keeping an eye on the butts on the ground problem and are there hot spots?
Oh, so people all in the, the area, smoking outside areas, I'm saying.
Right. So, because campus is, is, we have to provide some areas on the very edge of campus, but crossing the street into residential neighborhoods and standing in front of people's houses. And I'd just like to, you know, keep an eye and see if there are any hot spots developing where that's a problem. And maybe a need for another ashtray, right?
I mean, I apologize for not being here for this discussion, but was there a discussion on taking this ordinance across citywide? Do we discuss that possibility?
No, we didn't.
In what we, that's, or in what we did?
What we talked about was adding to parks, et cetera.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You have like public places and parks?
Yeah, we talked about adding chewing tobacco citywide and vaping citywide. And we chose to add the vaporizer to the current smoking ordinance, but not, not chewing tobacco.
But we did, we did discuss, because we have the ability to do it as a council, or the city manager at his, you know, request, we can shut down smoking in parks. To me, if we're gonna, if we have the, willing to do that and put it in ordinance, it just seems like, why, why don't we just take the step that most cities are doing in our neighbor, the university, and ending smoking altogether in our city parks? And I wanted, I just wanted to get that out there. I wish we would have made that step up.
I'd be with you, Jesse.
And the chewing tobacco, was there a reason why we, and did we talk, discuss that? I didn't, I didn't see that in the notes. Why we didn't put that in?
That was a toss-up. That was actually an absolute, if he's been here, we probably would have put chewing tobacco in the ordinance because it was a three to three tie with me not really having a vote.
It's almost like we're encouraging them to chew, okay.
But this is something we can revisit just today, if you would like to.
Yeah, perfect.
So, any other questions or comments on this before I read by title?
So, just some clarification. The, the border of Knox Street running north, is that street pronounced Wyngar? Wyngar. So, right before we hit Wyngar, if you hang a left around the curve, that goes along the backside of the library. And so, that is controlled by the university already.
Yes, it's a private road.
Can we confirm that?
No, it's, it's not private. It's a university road. Yes. Yeah, we researched all those roads, including stadium north of, north of church. That's also campus.
Which stadium had me confused.
Yeah, stadium has kind of a confused history, but it isn't, the city has an easement across the campus. It's not a public right of way.
Okay.
Wait a minute, I'm looking at this. So, that does not include, that does not include the track or football stadium, parking lot?
It's right above six, apparently.
Although those are off campus control, so just the no smoking policies are already in effect.
So, state, stadium behind the stadium and Jackson alongside the parking lot and the, the track and field area are, are university controlled already?
Because stadium, okay, which section of stadium?
Okay, Stadium Drive. I'm sorry, maybe I'm letting you get turned around.
Because if you're Monmouth on the north down to church, that's, that's campus.
That's campus property.
And then, if you go from church to Jackson on stadium, that's where we do have a designated line right there.
Because that is built right away?
Because I, this would be where the football stadium, all that is, and there's no, I'm surprised to not see red around.
No, the football stadium is at four.
Number four.
Okay, okay, I'm blocked off. Never mind. It would be, it would be one more block up here.
Below six, if you want to work oriented towards north.
That block below, if I turn it this way, southern north is the top of the block, below six, this is the block where the stadium and the track and field and the...
Oh, yeah, your map is wrong. Yeah, the map is wrong. The, the map is wrong. The ordinance is right. Yeah, that, that, that red line by four should come out to stadium. So, Jackson comes out to stadium and then stadium goes north to church. Yeah, I haven't seen that.
And Whitman doesn't really go through like that.
No, there's a, there is a right way through there.
It's true, you go drive through.
Well, no, there's none that goes through. But there is.
Well, yeah, it goes by the helping well in the center and the hole running through the parking lot, and you can't go out the driveway at the far end.
That red line by four should be there. Should be over to stadium. Yeah.
Right. Okay, got it. I'll clarify. Anything else? John?
No, but you said, Lane, that the ordinance is correct.
The ordinance is correct. Yeah, the map, the map doesn't illustrate.
You can always, you can always correct between readings, too, John.
But you don't need to correct the ordinance. It's fine. Thank you.
Okay. And then, the only question that I have is, has, have university personnel been involved?
Yeah, they, they reviewed this language to make sure it was what they wanted.
Okay. So, by title, an ordinance establishing regulations relating to smoking and chewing tobacco in public areas within or adjacent to Western Oregon universities. And we will have this next time. And finally, the first reading of an amendment to our smoking ordinance, and this is what Jesse was referring to earlier. We did have a discussion around chewing tobacco and vaping triggered by Western's request for this and, and their camp, inside campus. And we concluded that adding vaping is a good idea. We're gonna continue to chew on chewing tobacco. Sorry. So, this will also be a first reading on this amended smoking ordinance. Are there any questions on this beyond Jesse's stuff earlier?
Just, you know, that definition of a, let's see, inhalant delivery system, that's derived from state law. So, it, it ties our ordinance in with legislature's definition.
I wonder if in the red part, the 8.05.030, number two, there's not an additional word there. Smoking means and includes, one, the and inhale. Oh, so it's probably should just strike the N, right?
Strike the N, good, John.
Yeah, yeah, we'll fix that for a second.
There were the words. Anything else?
Yeah, so, so I apologize for having been one, one off, talking about what I said earlier. But playing fields, is that just sport playing fields, or could that be considered any area that we're playing in, anybody's playing in? Sport playing fields. Could that be our majority park area, play field?
I think that probably the, might just need your interpretation, Lane, if I'm wrong. It'd be prepared area for baseball or soccer, if you were to draw a park, or the basketball courts. That might not include the arboretum.
Or like the area where they play volleyball downtown. So, okay. All right.
Of course, if it's in a park, then it comes within the end of the regulation in the park too.
So, so 1A, the piece that reads inhalant delivery system that goes on to define that, that is verbatim what the state law?
It's not quite verbatim because state law dealt with not only the use, but also sale of inhalant. But it's condensed so that it covers the use.
So, my real question is that it's not limiting in any way to call out nicotine or cannabinoids because people could be smoking a non-nicotine component?
You know, this is what, I don't know enough about vaping or inhalants, but this is what state law covers now.
As long as it matches state law, I'd rather try to redefine that today.
I suppose there's a chance that people might be just doing flavors or something like that, you know?
Of course, you know, the, the, let's see. The, actually, you know, the, the definition is it's what it's designed for, or what, you know, what it can be used for. The actual definition of smoking is a little broader. The use of inhalant system to inhale or exhale vapor or aerosol or tobacco. So, that's a little broader, I think, probably than, than, than the, than the part in 1A. So, I think it probably would cover.
Well, same, that same thing is what I read this too, in that it's like all the chewing tobacco that isn't tobacco. So, and that's always the first thing about it was chewing. Can you stop them from chewing, you know, mint and, and?
A little jerky?
Yeah, jerky, all that stuff. I mean, it's not a tobacco. Yeah. So, I mean, that was one thing that when we talked about tobacco, that's not tobacco, chewing, and they're spitting, but hey, it's what you get, then you get more defined, you can't really do it, so. Okay, let's read.
Anything else? Okay, by title, first reading. An ordinance amending Monmouth City Code, Section 8.05.030, relating to the regulation of smoking. We'll look at that one next time. Which brings us to the end of the business agenda. Are there any council comments?
I get, I get one. I have one council comment, and Mark was here, and I've talked to Mark a couple times on this, on the audit. And I'm glad to see that we are going to look at somebody else next year and that's it. I just, my own opinion, and I went and talked to a couple of auditors, and I've talked to three or four CPEs, and they should have picked up that deal about the money because you do not write anything off. So, that's a carryover. Makes no difference. You do not write any bills off. So, I'm just saying, that was a, that was a mistake to the auditor for five, six years because you, I told them that you do not write anything off. So, I'm just, I want to see a different eye and a different face to that, so. I must thank you for looking at the chance though, somebody else next year, okay? Not the same guy.
Any other council comments?
I think it's the latest issue, July 23rd, Salem Weekly. They have a nice little corner in here called Cannabis Briefs. And just something I found of interest, the Journal of American Medical Association found that compared to areas that did not have medicinal cannabis laws, there were significantly higher opioid overdose mortality rates, essentially all the quote-unquote legal painkillers that are out there that are far more addictive, et cetera, et cetera, actually kill quite a few more people in the place where cannabis is not readily available. And so, I just thought that was appropriate, given that we are now about a month into our new law, and things seem to be going well. And so, I bring that up to say that maybe it'd be nice to hear from Chief Talent, doesn't have to obviously be a research project on how many people are dying less frequently. But just an overall report of what the impact of the, the new cannabis laws have been on specifically Monmouth. Could we do that at like a six-month rate? Once again, just have him come in and say, have we seen any change, any impact whatsoever?
Six months, maybe. It was, if we have anything to even say.
I mean, the reason, the reason why, and that's the thing, is we may not have anything to say, but the reason why I bring that up is I anticipate that within a year, we're gonna be dealing with people potentially looking to open medical or recreational marijuana stores within our city limits. And it sure seems that it would be nice to get a little preemptive approach on the impact that marijuana's had in our community before we're faced with folks coming in and requesting licensure.
Yeah, it might be that that sort of thing could be done on a, you know, sort of ongoing basis with the eye on it, on a perhaps a report at six or, six months or a year, because it may be a year before we were to get data. But, but if he were to be alerted to that, then that would save, by just being aware, I guess, that's a good idea.
Okay. And of course, we do have the recently signed measure that will allow the two medicinal shops and independents to start sounding recreational in their future, if I understand what I'm reading correctly. So, long before OLCC and the formalization of recreational shops comes around, so.
You gotta get a reason to start keeping an eye on it now rather than waiting for something.
Yeah, I just think we need to, you know, know that this is happening, and keep it in our city community, so.
Mr. Mayor, with full disclosure, I've not read your mayor's notes yet. This, but, and so, if you've addressed this collectively, then, then fine. But are there any, have we given any consideration to any thought and discussion relative to water conservation in the city of Monmouth?
We haven't, no.
And, you know, I, I, I mean, that's all a buzz, of course, and we get our water from a different source than other people. But, you know, it might be worth considering some voluntary curtailment. I don't know, we seem to be whizzing along without any consideration of that at all.
However, come on. Actually, the last week when we had that really blast, we, we did, we got pretty close to maxing our supply. So, we definitely pushed up the threshold. It'll loosen up a little bit, but we got close.
And, and Mayor, you're all signing downtown as a, not a statement that the city is running short. It's just a general.
It's not a call to action. It's just a caution.
Just a comment, right. And that's the city sign that's been put up? Yeah, okay. So, you know, it, you know, that's a good point. Certainly, you know, you look at some of the streams around and they're getting muddy lumps, so.
Well, I see Dallas just, they're gonna back off on theirs in the attempt to keep the Rickroyal Creek flowing as they draw from that. And Lake Swig is under some pressure right now for pulling from the Clackit. Lake Swig and Tiger are gonna begin pulling from the Clackamas River, which is, you know, and it probably in normal years wouldn't be any issue. But there's sensitivity to that, and it may be that we would be wise to just offer that suggestion on some voluntary reductions. And, and, and there may be some things, you know, city's got some investments that need to be watered, parks and that sort of thing. But if there are other things that the city could back off on.
Kind of look at it as we look at our LED lighting. Is there anywhere we could, you know, invest something?
So, anyway, I'm not, that, that, that might just be something we could give some consideration to and have a discussion in the future.
Well, I can share with Scott, Dallas adopted a tiered water conservation program with specific elements at, at various levels of the, and, and that's what they've done voluntarily. They've asked people to voluntarily implement the first level, not because of the water shortage. The reservoir has over a ninety-day supply of water in it, but Dallas is the, has the senior water right in the creek. And so, trying to be a steward to other users, asking to cut back just to put more water back in the creek. But there is a fairly detailed list of, of elements of, I think, a three-level water shortage plan.
Might we have a look at that next time?
I think you should copy this, Scott.
It's straightforward. I actually managed a city that, that had that same policy, and we had to activate it. We went to the, you know, days of the week scheduling. What typically they do is, it's, first one's voluntary. The second one is like every other, it might back off to three days a week, and the last one is turn out watering outside.
I grew up with that too.
Well, let's have a look. I have a look at the proposal, Scott, if you don't mind. Send us something out by, by next packet just to have an idea for discussion, at least. Well, let's have a look, I have a look at the proposal, Scott, you know, and send it, you know, send us something out by, by next packet, just to have an idea for discussion at least.
Well, I have a note I want to add on that. A couple of weeks ago, there was a significant fire off of Holmes Road and Fishback Road, and, um, Monmouth's water supply was quite handy, because they kept running in and out, their tankers in and out of Monmouth. I mean, they fought that fire for over five hours.
Right.
And I went out and sat on Monmouth Cutout for a while and watched the trucks come and go, um, as they were using the water, so. Fortunately, we do have a significant, good water source, because it really made a difference for, for them being able to contain that fire in a short period of time.
Good comments, Steve, thanks.
And I'll tell you what, you wanna see where water, the shortages is evident, go to Detroit Lake. I'm mind blown, I couldn't believe we came around the corner and saw that going on. It's just, it's amazing.
You wanna make a comment?
Oh, I just wanted to support Marshall's proposal, um, because it may, if you start early, it may allow you to get a baseline to later move and fix check.
So, so just a citizen comment around Marshall's request for info from the chief as we see the act of, uh, the marijuana laws.
Or a group like you said.
Okay, any other council comments tonight? With that, I would request a motion to adjourn the council meeting to the Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Move adjourn.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and now opening the Urban Renewal Agency, um, and I will, um... Marshall, just, just go ahead and let it run.
Yeah.
Um, we have, uh, um, I will note that everybody is still here. Uh, are there any citizens' comments on urban renewal? And seeing none, I will, uh, note that we have minutes from the meeting of July twenty-first. If I can have a motion to approve those minutes.
To approve those minutes?
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll adopt those minutes, and return to a facade grant, uh, application for four oh one to four twenty-nine Main Street East. And we have at our places, uh, updated, uh, cost estimate for this. And the total project cost has gone up, which means the request, uh, for various items has gone, uh, for, for, uh, facade grant match has gone up. So, Mark, tell us what you got.
Uh, yeah, that was good that you noted the, the revised estimate, so the request here is for twelve thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is half of the twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and seventy dollar, uh, cost estimate. Kurt Mitchell, the property owner, is here this evening, if you have any questions. This facade application deals with the rear of the marketplace building and then also some work on the east wall. The rear wall of the, the building is very noticeable along the Clay Street frontage of the property. And previously, the Urban Renewal Agency had approved a facade improvement grant request of fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars for the work that was done to the front of the building, and that was successfully completed. The request here again is for twelve thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I noted in the staff report that improvements to siding rear facades, as noted in the, in the program materials, are eligible for grant funding under the facade improvement grant program. You've got sample motions at the bottom of page one.
That's the balance of the funds that this would come from.
This comes out of the Urban Renewal Agency funds, and we have fifteen thousand typically budgeted every year for facade improvement grants.
So this is gonna mostly wipe out the shears facade?
Yeah, yeah, well, we're running out of facades to work on, we, this is about our fifteenth grant now, and so, so even though I kinda knocks it out, I don't see anything else coming, no one else has been talking to me, and today usually I have no lunch in advance when something's coming, so.
And we, we can take a look at, we need to be cautious, 'cause the, the, the big draw was, was the urban renewal project, to do the amphitheater. And we got the sidewalk project coming across the street, so that was a, that was a pretty good jump. So we got, we got a small contingency, you know, if we had a smaller one, we can take a look at it, but we're getting, we're getting tight in that fund.
I'm sorry, what sidewalk project is this?
Across the street.
Which street?
Where the banners are.
Okay.
For the banner access, so basically, one and many.
So on the previous facade, uh, requests that we approved for this, uh, building, I thought in that, that, um, uh, application that they were painting the entire building. Do they not have that in the, in their, in their proposal, or was just specifically the front side?
It was, it was the, they did the front, they did the west side that faces the library.
Yeah, that's what I'm calling as well.
Okay, any other questions on this?
You know, I, 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 I have, and I have a hard time figuring exactly, and I looked, but I didn't look as close as I might have. That, that is on the, the, I, I have a problem with the back of the building, frankly. And, uh, however, there are some things that seem to be more universal than I would be, uh, sort of in favor of. New gutters and downspouts in the entire marketplace building, seems like there were. Bike rack, I'm assuming that would be in front. I don't know, I, I, and I understand that there's, and the picture is, is reflective there, but, you know, to me, a facade is up front. And, um, and by, you've totally marked that by definition, this works. But it, I, I, it just, it does, this doesn't feel good. And we can approve it, and that's fine, and it'd be good if, if that got done, but, um...
And John, I, I gotta tell you that I had sort of the same response about doing the back of the building. And then I stepped back to think about the location, and how kinda in the face of the community it is, and I concluded that this might be a good back of the building to do. That said, I also wondered about, is it time to, just spend a little time with the facade improvement program, and wonder about back of buildings being property owner's responsibility, not urban renewal's.
I mean, that, that...
I, I would be open to that discussion.
Yeah, I, and I, I, I don't know, I mean, the facades that we've done have dressed up the fronts of the buildings to make them more attractive for business, uh, and more enticing for business. This seems to be a way to get the building painted.
Yeah.
Do you want to say something personal?
I don't know.
Yeah, right, sorry, it's...
Yeah, well, I, uh, on this, uh, just wanna ask you on this money, saying we won't put any more money in there until, uh, probably until January or March of next year, right? With the tax collection and the urban renewal?
Yeah, tax should come in November.
Yeah, but by the time the money gets here. So we're just about out of money now in the urban renewal with the program that we started?
Oh, no, no, no.
But I mean, with this, with this, with this program here, are we about out of it?
As, as we budgeted, yes.
Okay.
And the, and the new budget wouldn't go into effect until July of next year?
Yeah.
But it, it is possible to reinforce this fund, it may be, if we have a compelling application, we could always cover that. See, so...
I know that technically, this is the back of the building, but for those of us that live on Clay, use Clay, and use the post office.
Right.
Is not the back of the building. And I think it would be an asset for the city to have that be...
And that's, that was where I can't...
Looking really nice, that it's, that it really is a front porch.
Yep.
Along Clay Street. And I think that, um, there are some other improvements that I'd like to see in other parts of Clay Street, but I think that would be a nice, um, trendsetter to really improve that.
That's what I came around to as well. Anybody over here with any questions or comments?
So, I know we've done it in the past, and gone over the threshold, uh, for funding. Says up to fi- do not exceed five thousand dollars.
That's per address?
Per address.
Per, um, the discussion.
There's a lot of addresses there. Yeah. All right, Ron.
Yeah, well, half that block is the, uh, is that old motel that's an apartment house. That you look at, these were motel years ago. And, okay, so, you fix one half, what's the, I'm just saying, what's the stopping the people from the motel coming and ask for, and have their place repainted and a facade put on it, 'cause it's a business. And I, I think you have to put up, you say, yes, it looks good, and yes, I go to the post office every day, I look at that. There's dumpsters out there, all those trucks are parked out there, crap stacked all over. Every day, that has nothing to do with facade, it has nothing to do with painting. I mean, you gotta clean all that mess up too, which hasn't been cleaned up in five years. And I go by there every day. And so if you painted it, you still got the trucks, the dumpsters, the crap stacked up out there, the people coming through. You only done half the block, the other half is the rentals now. I, I have a tough time, the front part, I really understand, with the front of the place, the facade, to make it look nice, present the business and everything else. And, yeah, it's bad to look at the backside of it, but that's only half the deal. That part of it is the, is the owner of the place, or the people that maintain it too. I'm just saying, you know, you have a, it's a, it's a tough field, repair everything for him, and only do half the work.
And, and I think you can only do what you can do with the property owners who ask and someone, but maybe half of that is better than that.
Yeah, you still like, you still have the dumpster, you still have the front door, you still have the...
Just to clarify that, if the facade program applies to commercial businesses only?
Only if it's required by the community, it's the same as well.
I wonder if there's any future in speaking with the owners about screening dumpsters and so on. Oh, I wonder if there's any, any hope in, uh, asking the owner about screening dumpsters and so on. Is that something you consider?
Yes. Let me just clarify one thing.
Come on up and, and grab a seat, and give us your name and city for the record, so we have it all official.
Kurt Mitchell is my name, and, uh... I've owned it for about ten years, and that area you're talking about has been a thorn in everybody's side, for at least that long. To clarify, the area that's behind the apartments, the back part of the building, and the apartment sit in front of it, that will all be painted, that's all included in this. And most of the, the trucks and the garbage and the stuff are related to, uh, P C L. And sometimes it's a little hard to get them to move, it's very hard to get them to move. But, um, I just noted that I think what we need to do is take it on as an issue, and yet, if they have dumpsters back there, they're enclosed, they're not wire mashed, you can see inside all the junk. And the other smaller dumpsters that are there are for, three of the businesses are up front. The pizza parlor, and the bagel shop, and so on, um, and the market. I don't know quite how to handle that, but that could be improved, and, um, certainly try to work with those tenants, to straighten that area out. There've been times when we had to threaten them and say, you know, you clean up that area or you're in violation of the lease. Because a lot of times, they'll dump stuff outside the, you know, or it'll fill up, and so that spills over. And, uh, those are, um, both things, they're all, um, straightened out.
Well, any, any effort you can make would be appreciated, and, uh, but I do, I do think, you know, as, as Councilman Ollie noted, that it's a thoroughfare for a goodly chunk of town to reach the freeway, or the highway rather, and go on path to the post office. So anything you can do, we appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. So, the folks, we have a, um, proposed motion on the back of the first page that lists a specific eleven thousand dollars for the facade improvement grant, and Mark noted that that needs to be modified to twelve thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. So with that, if I could have a motion on this, uh...
I've got a quick question before we go to there. So is this specifically just what they have listed in the estimate here, it's just the painting, the removal of blocks? Or is, is it also the neon lighting and bike racks, everything, in that area?
Just the whole sheet and that, that was in that second copy of the, the packet.
I didn't see the lighting, I'm sorry, where is that?
The full list is painting, south side, including caulking, primer, two coats of paint, masonry, replacing for cinder blocks, repair of forty-five feet of retainer, wall top, um... Painting of new exterior metal door in the loading area, installation of new gutters and downspouts, repair of handrail, straighten handrail, and support brackets, insulation of bike rack.
Jesse had, Jesse had the older voice, we're back on the act now.
Okay. So, here we go.
I move approval of the facade improvement grant application for twelve thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars for the property located at four oh one through four twenty-nine Main Street East.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, and do we need a roll call on this lane, or?
Uh, I'm trying to get your practice this bend. Yeah, you don't have to have one, I'm just trying to get your practice.
I think we have for a facade grant.
Okay, yeah, it's, you're not required.
I think my major is we're spending money, we should.
Okay, it's fine.
Um, do you wanna run down the seven, or?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Oberst?
Yes.
Mr. Silvernagle?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
No.
So that would be a six to one, and it passes, uh, let's see, a nice new facade on the backside. And that brings us to the end of the meeting. Uh, I would propose that we, uh, adjourn the urban renewal meeting and re, uh, reopen the council meeting to hear, uh, Royals' concerns, uh, he, he raised earlier, and, uh, you can go from there. So, uh, if I could have a motion to adjourn our urban renewal to a brief other business work session?
Submit.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we're back into a short-term work session.
Well, we won't call it work sessions since we didn't know it, this'll be other business, other council, agenda.
Didn't matter. Thank you. Ron?
Yeah, and what I have to, see, my big concern is, we just came out of that police department bid. We had Greenbrier down there, or Greenbear, whatever, was down there in Corvallis, run the job. What a fiasco, literally, what a fiasco. Nobody took responsibility for anything, we had no prime contractor, we had them running. Something goes wrong, who do we really contact? All I wanna know is, is this bid on this amphitheater is one bid, one contractor, he is responsible, along with the architect, and nobody running the program. That way they're, that way they're responsible, the bidder that did the deal. I mean, why would we hire somebody else to come in and oversee the job that the bidder should be doing? And we have a building inspector, we have the city manager, we have, we have people right down the road in the public works. What I'm saying is, why do we hire a second person, like we did at the police station, that couldn't answer one question when I said here, John, you asking the same thing? Couldn't answer anything, just the way it is, it's the war money. That's not the answer. The answer is, you are the bidder, you took the plans from the city and the architect, why is there an overrun? Why something didn't get done, why the cost? That person has to be responsible, is the way I look at it. Is that the way this one's gonna be bid, or are we hiring somebody outside?
No, this is a completely different process.
Okay, well, that's what I wanna make sure, that's what I wanted to ask before the bid went out. And we can ask them to stand on the bond for one year or two years, 'cause the amphitheater's kind of a funny deal, because we're only gonna use it for three or four months, and then it's gonna set for eight months, and then we'll use it again for three or four months. I mean, it's not a year-round deal, the city park, the irrigation isn't gonna be year-round, you know, all that part and everything else. So what I'm asking is, and you can do it, I know you can on a bond, you can put a two-year hold on the bond, or a two-year warranty on it, however you wanna do it, that stands up, so we go through two seasons to see if it may, you know, we have any problems.
And we, we spent some time talking about in the police station, the difference between doing a, a construction manager versus, with, with a general contractor versus, uh, just bringing in somebody and doing the whole thing. And I, so I recall, there were enumerated some really good fiscal reasons for taking the approach that we did. They're escaping me right now.
The reason, I'm saying, your reason was...
It was a complex and that's...
But we sit down at this meeting and ask those people why the overruns, and everybody goes, it just over-rimmed.
So I guess, I guess, aside from that process, that one's done.
Yeah.
This one is more straightforward, yep, they, they have obviously the ability to do subs, but, um, we, we bid the project, we're, we're managing it, and we can bring in a special inspector if we need him for something. This is basically a contractor, it's their responsibility to line up their subs, this is actually more of a straightforward project.
So I mean, yeah.
And, and do I remember correctly, Scott, I saw, I seem to recall something going by shortly after we engaged... after we engaged a construction manager approach at the fire station in the state was going to make that approach considerably more difficult going forward.
Yes.
To the point where we probably will never do one that way again, Royal, simply because the state has made it so onerous, basically at the request of union shops, maybe?
I don't remember, but, yeah, you got one of the last, uh, construction manager contracts, I think, that, that you'll see, at least at a little government level. I think universities are still doing it?
I was going to say, we've had really good luck with it, so it's the reverse, and haven't had the same kinds of issues. There are some advantages to them, the advantage is, we've seen before, was basically when you do have overruns, you've got a whole team that's basically then figuring out how to work within those numbers, and, uh, you know, it didn't work so well on this one. I think one of the things that's different with this last one...
I guess that's right, it didn't work well in this situation. If we didn't have this team and this process, we would have been worse shaped.
Worse shaped, probably.
Because we, we had to have that much, that many people. You have to remember, we, we were basically making it really easy, you're told, you know, if it's going to cost you a hundred bucks to do something, you start the project and you're given 70. And that's where we started with this project, it was actually everybody working very heroically that actually got the project done and a good, good product.
The, the thing I would say that was different with this project than, than say the university one we've done, is we really haven't done it for remodel projects. So, I think that complicated this one quite a bit.
That's true.
And so, uh, I, yeah, I, I think based on where we were at, we did the best we could with what we had.
Yeah, and that's, remember, we started out behind the curve. This wasn't a case of just things just escalating, getting out of control during the process. Everybody frankly, really batted down, we had contractors not charging for services, I mean, all the way through, they, they really worked hard to get it done.
And we, we based our request of voters on what our architect told us, and we then brought in a construction manager who quickly determined that the architect kind of missed a few things. And so, that, when you say we started out behind the curve, that's where that happened.
It was all the front end.
And, and that could happen, no matter what approach you take, if you have an architect and you, you request funds based on that architect's work, and you trust that architect, because frankly, the architect we used is one of the best in the Northwest, or at least that's been the reputation for this kind of project. And, uh, we just drew the, the bad card, I guess, that, uh, every now and then, everybody messes one up, and they missed out on, on the cost of this project, and I don't think it was, you could say, nobody took responsibility for it, Royal, as much as...
Sit right here at the meetings and ask what the problems were, and everybody said it's a remodel, that's just the way it is, but nobody took responsibility, why the remodel costs so much more, why we ran into these other problems? I'm just saying you need, I'd just like to see one person sit out there and say, hey, we missed bid, or you at the architect redesigned it wrong, this is why it is. That's the kind of people I like talking to, not somebody that goes, oh, that's the way it is, and that's just exactly what he said as, as the engineer that you hired to run that job, that's why I heard him say that twice, well, that's the way it is. That's not my kind of answer to when we're putting city money out there. I want somebody to sit there, if it's the architect and the bidder, and tell us why something didn't go wrong. That's the two people that should answer. We shouldn't have to hear, oh, that's the way it is.
Yeah, we were told by...
You were saying the same thing, John, you were saying...
And if I could, the, the key thing is that this is a different project.
I know, but I'm just saying we don't want it.
But we change it differently, I mean, and yes, are things going to come up? Absolutely, they come up on every project.
It does, it will.
We, we have a hot bidding environment, we're not too sure it's going to happen when the bids come back, but, um, we'll do a good job.
How many, how many, um, bids did we have for the, for the general on the job? I mean, that's, uh...
Amphitheater?
The amphitheater.
Oh, we haven't got anything yet. They aren't due yet.
Have you anticipated any idea?
No.
Yeah. How many did we get from the police station? Just curious.
That was, I think it was eight.
So, there is that many people, or groups that can, physically take that type of job? That's, that's part of the, that was longer, that's good.
Yeah.
Makes me show off a little bit.
Yeah, we have very qualified firms.
And I think we were pretty, they, they laid out what, what went wrong, it, it, right from the get-go, it was just a matter of, you know, what are they supposed to do at that point? I mean, we, we, we were at a point where we hadn't moved forward, I mean...
Well, I'm just saying, I sat right here, I wasn't in the beginning, but I sat right here, and we went to $365,000 or $75,000 at the budget meeting, that we're behind, and we asked what the deal was, and that's just the way it is, remodel. That was the exact words that were brought by you and the people. Then we come back for the $100,000 or $96,000, that we needed more to finish the job, the guy come here, sit down here from Corvallis, and he basically said, that's just the way it is. But that's not the answers you're looking for. When we're spending taxpayer money, we need to be more...
I think the idea was that was the cost to complete those...
It doesn't, but there was no answers to it.
Well, I, I guess I didn't know what else you could do, I mean, they could, I guess they could have given you a detailed sheet of everything.
I would rather have seen a detailed sheet why it costs money, they'd give a better idea of that.
I think we'd have gotten the same place.
Yeah.
All right. So, well, at the, at a risk here, um, I thought that we were going to have this to work session, or this continuation of the meeting to talk about the upcoming bid, not...
That's basically what we're doing.
Rip on Scott for the...
I'm not ripping on anyone.
Well...
What I'm trying to do...
So, from a council meeting situation, are you done on the...
Yeah, I, you go ahead, you go.
On this bid?
I'm just, I'm just saying, okay, I just said I would like to see somebody there that's responsible for the bid, and I don't mean Scott.
I was, I was at one of the original meetings, at the original meeting, when the architect came at the table with Doug and the, um, construction manager, and they basically did say, we have egg on our face, we have a problem. And I don't know that they needed to say that at every meeting, but they did take some responsibility. Now, from my perspective, and I talked with Doug several times through the process, is that had we not had the process that we had in place, the likelihood is, is that would have gone probably another, um, hundred, $100,000, $500,000, maybe $500,000 more than what it was, if we, if we'd have gone by an original, um, design bid build instead of what we did, because that wouldn't have had cost containment to the way that this one did. And even though you feel like it ran over, it, it did, but the cost containments were still there to keep the cost from going astronomically out of, out of place. I, I, I don't know what more to say. I, I'm satisfied with what happened.
And I don't think this is a, well, it's not a place to really say we're satisfied or happy, it all worked great, but we were talking about the, the new, the new bid process, I think, let's keep it focused on that, and this is...
Excellent.
Or we could have it any different time.
We're good.
Okay, so, put out the new bids, Scott.
It is. It's already out, that's...
We just know how they come out. I'd be curious to see how we did on our end.
I might, I might let you know.
And because we can't ever do the construction manager process again, we won't do the construction manager process again.
That's highly unlikely.
Right. I just, you know, this, the state made it horrendously harder, is what I recall. You have to have, um, you know, an incredible amount of information to even begin to justify looking at it anymore, so. All right, with that, I would, yeah...
Switching back to cannabis, one more time. October 1st is when that law goes into effect, it was signed by the governor, so we are two months away, and...
Recreational, uh, medicinal shops.
From medicinal, and it's also, it's a tax holiday until, uh, January 4th of next year, I think it is, so there'll be no sales tax imposed for those three months, which means that it could be, uh, off to a quick start.
So, you, you're saying that they're going to be able to sell recreation?
October 1st.
Ouch.
The two, the two stores in Independence and anyone else operating in Oregon with a medical license will be able to sell recreationally with some limitations.
Quarter ounce per day maximum, is what I read today.